Do you want mine?
All right, I'm agreeing now. Okay, here we go. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on November 20, 2017. If you please join Vice Mayor Campbell in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. This evening, we pray for those who sacrifice daily, the men and women who serve to protect our city and around the globe, those who serve in our armed forces, our veterans, our police, our fire, and our first responders. Bless our city, Lord, and its residents. May Goodyear continue to prosper in the years to come. Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. First thing we need is a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Osborne for not being in the meeting tonight. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Sir, I think that was Councilman Stiff made the motion. I'm going to give the second to Vice Mayor. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll go down to communication. We have a brief update on the status of the Bureau of Land Management projects impacting the city of Goodyear by Leon Thomas, the Phoenix Director of BLM. Welcome. Thank you.
Is his mic on?
Can you pull the microphone up a little bit higher?
Just push the button. There you go.
How about now?
Oh, good. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Again, thank you for your time for tonight's agenda. A little overview about the Bureau of Land Management in the Phoenix District. We cover from the Mexico border on the south, the center part of the state, all the way to the northern border, and more to center. We have two field offices that encompass the Phoenix District, split right through Phoenix. The red line right through Phoenix is the two field offices. The one to the south is the Lower Sonoran Field Office, which is mine, and then Hacienda Field Office is north of I-10. We cover 2.4 million acres of public land. Out of that, we have 1.3 million acres of of surface minerals that we manage and 737,000 subsurface minerals. And in the Lower Sonoran, we have 210,000 subsurface mineral acres. We encompass two national monuments, one National Historic Trail, which is the Juan Batista de Anza. We have 11 wilderness areas, as well as a National Recreation Trail. I'd like to cover some of the district projects that Lower Sonoran Field Office is within the city of Goodyear that we'll cover. The Sonoran Valley Parkway Project. Right now, the process for the federal registry notice of the environmental impact statement is going through our processes over in the Washington office. It ran into a little bit of hiccups with the administration change. Talked to our state director this morning, and we have made sure that it is making its processes. So every couple of weeks, our state director calls over to Washington and ensures that the next person in line is reviewing it and signing it to move it along. So we anticipate it being published soon. I don't want to commit to any times with the new administration and other different priorities that are in place. If you have any questions along the way, feel free to ask. The other projects that we have moving is the travel management. This is encompassing the Buckeye Hills and Rainbow Valley area. It's outlined in the blue area on the map. So far to date, we've held public meetings. We just completed our different sets of route evaluations, which we reevaluated 694 miles of routes within that area. The next step is to develop an environmental assessment, have more public meetings to show the different alternatives that we have, and then issue a decision, and then implementation of the different routes that we'll designate for public use. As far as the Sonoran Desert National Monument, just just south of the planning area and west of the planning area, we've had two different litigations. In 2012, the resource management plans for both the Lower Sonoran Field Office and the Sonoran Desert National Monument were assigned and records the decisions at the end of 2012. In 2013, there were two litigations, one for challenging recreational target shooting on the monument, as well as grazing and the compatibility on the monument objects. To date with the recreational target shooting, today was, we completed the environmental impact statement. It was released 30 days ago, and today was the day for the last part of the public protest period. We will be resolving the protests over the next few days, a few weeks. And also, the governor's consistency review is still continuing. I know we're halfway through with the governor's consistency review. And then we will be issuing a decision by March 5th by court order. As far as the grazing, we are in the process of the last season for land health evaluations. And then we'll write a compatibility analysis, and we have to file that with court by June of 2018. That'll put a decision as far as whether or not it backs up our decision in the resource management plan, or we will have to go and do another RMP amendment, which would be another two-year process as well. And then we also, earlier this year, I signed the Juan Batista de Anza Management Zone Recreation Plan. That was an environmental assessment as well. This has to deal with the Hash Demarc in the center north of 238 and south of the north Maricopa Monument Wilderness Area. We have three different recreational areas. On the west side of the Butterfield Pass, we have, we're implementing a vault toilets and developed campsite areas for RVs, which they'll have fire rings, picnic tables, shelter, more sun shelter. And then on the east side of the pass, there'll be primitive camping, and then Christmas camp, which has a state inholding halfway between the pass and the monument border. And there will be a larger area for large groups, up to 150 individuals. Mostly, we have Boy Scouts doing their annual get-togethers there. And that could hold up to 75 vehicles. That's all that I have to present as far as the different major projects that may have impact or may impact the city of Goodyear. Free to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions on this? Yes, Councilman Loretano?
I just want to say thank you for the update, because I think this is really important for our citizens to know, especially what wide areas of land that we're talking about here and the recreation opportunities that are pretty close to Goodyear. So thank you.
Any other? Councilman Campbell? Vice Mayor, excuse me.
I don't know that you have a pointer, but is there any possibility that you could show me on the district projects, I'm sorry, on the Sonoran Desert National Monument map? If you might, oh, of course you do. Could you show me where the camps, camp sites would be and the picnic areas in relation to 238?
This one away. This, this area right here, this route, is just west of the Butterfield Pass, and that's where we will have public access from 238 north with RV campers. Then we'll have a couple of camping loops. I don't know if you've ever been out to Painted Rock Petrograph Site. There's some overnight camping there, and that's what we're planning right now. We're in the engineering drawing phase of the different loops that we have.
That's a perfect place to put it.
Mm-hmm. And initially, what we're also looking at is equestrian use and maybe putting a, potentially putting a corral just off of north of 238. They'll ride their horses to the camping areas and maybe into the wilderness area as well. And then on the eastern side of Butterfield Pass, by this trail here, would be halfway between 238 and the pass which goes this direction, just west of this, this trail, closer to the mountains. There'll be a couple of finger roads that allow for primitive camping. And then the other one, there's a blue square right there, which is state inholding lands. And that would be a trail going from 238 north, and it would just be an in and out for that. And that's for large groups, and that's where the Mormon Battalion Trail, or Mormon Battalion camped out on Christmas back when they were moving across the lands.
Well, thank you very much. I know that we have a lot of folks that have their horses that do go and ride up there, and they'll be very appreciative if you do put a corral so that they can bring their horses there and stay and camp and then go out, because that's one of their favorite places to be.
Mm-hmm, and we're looking to reach out to the different equestrian groups to give us a hand with maintenance and design.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that's no problem. I also like to point out that earlier this year, Wayne Monger, who is now the Sonoran Desert National Monument Manager, was hired on. So he's, he's new as well.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. We greatly appreciate it. We look forward to hearing the results of, of Washington's decisions.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
I'll keep in touch with Joe Schmidt for that.
Yes, good, good. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the city of Goodyear. City Council, do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody in the audience tonight that wants to speak? All right, with that, we're going to get on with the meeting then. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items, 6.1 through 6.3, by title only, please?
6.1, approved draft minutes from a special meeting held on November 6, 2017. 6.2, approved the final plat for the refinery church, subject to stipulations. 6.3, approved the final plat of PB 303 East 2 Phase 1, subject to stipulations.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the audience wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does one of you on the council wish to remove an item?
Mayor, I have a question, please, on two items.
All right, question from Vice Mayor. On two items, which one first?
Six, I'd like to talk about 6.1 and 6.1, 6.2 and 6.3 together.
Okay. Katie, would you address that? Look, she's already out of her seat and on the move. Thank you, Katie.
So Katie, my question is really simple. Sorry. In looking at the maps, and I put the two parcels together, I just wanted to be sure. Well, number one, on the refinery church, are they coming, are they going to be entering here? Are they putting a road in? And will both parcels share the same road?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. The, the developer, Sunbelt, will be putting the main road in.
Okay.
But yes, it's north 166 Sixth Lane will provide primary access to both the church and the future commercial parcels to the east.
Okay, I have no problem with the development of either one of those sites, but I would like to know that we are mindful of any drainage problems because the, the 6.3 borders an RV lot. And I want to make sure that the drainage from the parcel we're talking about tonight does not end up draining in that RV lot, because that would cause another problem. Okay?
Thank you. The, the drainage is being reviewed with these, with the civil construction plans, and there are stipulations included on the plat that address the drainage.
Great, that's all I needed to know. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right. So is, I've asked, did anybody in the audience, and you gave yours, so can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilman Stiff. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, we're down to the business. So again, refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. There's a motion on the table. 7.1, the first item on business is a public hearing to consider Hudson Commons PAD. So I'm going to open the public hearing. And Alex Letensky, planner two, will be presenting. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. My item is regarding Hudson Commons PAD. If you'll recall, the Hudson Commons planned area development was zoned PAD in January of 2016. And then earlier this year, we removed the city center gateway overlay district. This amendment, the Hudson Commons PAD includes the single-family, commercial, and multifamily on the corner of Estrella Parkway and Van Buren. This amendment only applies to the multifamily area. And the proposed amendment makes changes, oh, like I said, only to the multifamily MF24 regulations. There's two pages that are proposed to be amended in the PAD document, and that's page 21. This first bullet is regarding the city center gateway overlay district. So just to kind of keep in line with what the city's regulations are, they are proposing to delete that bullet point. And then in number three, they're adding a, a section that allows private patios within the western perimeter landscape buffer. And that's this area to the west. On page 45, the bullet number, footnote five, is reiterating that statement that was within, on page 21, just stating that the perimeter, private enclosed patios are permitted within the perimeter landscape. Sorry, I can't see very well.
Yes, it's not a good slide very well. It's not very dark. Can you darken a little bit? I don't know.
It's, it's on my page. I'm sorry. I just didn't print very well. Private enclosed patios are permitted within the perimeter landscape setback along the multifamily western boundary. So the purpose of this amendment is to allow the multifamily, single-story bungalow-style apartments on the site, so similar to what you've been seeing with the Avila, the other amendments that have come before. So the intent here is to back up the single-story units against the single-family side and allow that western perimeter to be the backyards of the units. In total, there's 183 units. A citizen review meeting was held on September 27. There was no one from the public who attended this meeting. Staff has received a few phone calls regarding the amendment. They were questioning about the multifamily use, but staff did inform them that multifamily was already allowed by right, and the, the amendment was only regarding the stipulations about setbacks. So they were satisfied with those answers. We did give proper notice for all public hearings. Staff finds the proposed amendments to be consistent with the general plan and the original vision that was included in the Hudson Commons PAD. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the item on November 8. And this concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for questions or presentation as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read ordinance number 17-1370 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 17-1370, amending the Hudson Commons final pad document dated November 2015 to allow private patios within the western perimeter landscape buffer area and to remove requirements regarding the orientation of buildings along Estrella Parkway, providing for corrections, non-abridgement, severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. I'm looking right. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a quick question. On those patios, are they going to look similar to like Avilla? I believe the one off of Indian School. Any idea how, how deep those patios may be?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo. The, the depth of the patios on the western perimeter is 30 feet. And I can ask the applicant?
Yeah, why don't you have the applicant come up and address that? Thank you very much. We appreciate this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Ready with LVA. I'm the applicant. To answer your question, yes, the patios along the western perimeter are 30 feet deep. There's a 30-foot building setback. So the buildings are set back 30 feet from that western boundary, and then the private backyards go all the way to the property line.
30 feet, I think that's a little wider than Avilla, if I'm not mistaken.
It is. I think Avillas are either 15 or 20.
Yeah, and I, I think that's nice to have that 30 feet in there, to be honest with you. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Loretano.
I just have a question, because I'm really just having trouble visualizing the patios. I think that's a great idea. And I'm just, the first one striking, building, building orientation. And I just can't visualize what the difference is. I guess I'm having trouble. Maybe you could help just describe it?
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the first piece of the amendment is simply to remove the reference to the city center gateway overlay district. The city center gateway overlay district was, I think, rescinded by council earlier this year. That ordinance applied to our project at the time that it was in the code. And basically, what it said was that buildings had to front Estrella Parkway, which is a six-lane arterial road. And I think the city had realized that some of the language in that overlay was detrimental and was becoming problematic for developers. And so because at the time that ordinance was in place, we were required to conform to it. So the PAD for Hudson Commons was approved in 2016, when that ordinance was still in place. And so we had referenced those requirements in the PAD. The city has since removed that from the code, but it's still written in our PAD. So we had to basically remove it so that that requirement no longer applies.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So I got you.
Any other questions? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. We're down to 7.2. And the business item is a public hearing to consider a use permit for the convenience-use drive-through restaurant. Katie's going to present. I'm going to open the public hearing. Katie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As was stated, this request is for a use permit for a Bahama Bucks restaurant, which includes a drive-through component. They're proposing locating at the Cotton Flower Marketplace, which is on the southwest corner of Yuma and Cotton Lane, which is the future 303. As you can see, this is located in the very southern part of the property. It is adjacent to the Cotton Flower Residential Neighborhood and the current Moose Lodge facility. The commercial center can be accessed from Yuma Road and there, and currently Cotton Lane. And once the 303 is in, there is currently a planned frontage road that will still be accessible to the east. The drive-through window is located on the south side of the building. There was a neighborhood meeting, but no residents did attend that meeting, and no one at the Planning and Zoning Commission spoke for, against the proposal. However, during the discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about the location of signage and the menu board with location to the residence. So we did add a stipulation that would require the menu board be located, and the speaker box be located on the west side of the building so that that couldn't be relocated to the south to minimize potential impact to the residents to the south of the building. The, and I will, oops. The, they did provide elevations, which meet the city of Goodyear's design standards and the design standards for the center. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve a request for the use permits for a convenience-use drive-through restaurant to be constructed within the Cotton Flower PAD, located at the southwest corner of Cotton Lane and Yuma Road, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Vice Mayor Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah. So first, I want to say welcome, welcome to Goodyear. Take that one. Welcome to Bahama Bucks to Goodyear. We're excited to have you. And I had a question on, in relation to this drive-through and the Filibertos that is also coming in that general area. Where, where in relationship to this is, is that one?
Thank you. The Filibertos is to the north, and this doesn't include the entire site, but this is a little hard to read at this scale, but this is the site, and Filibertos is about right there.
Okay, I just make sure the drive-throughs aren't interfering with each other, which I'm sure you've already thought of, but just curious.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, did you?
Okay.
Did you get the answer you were looking for?
Yeah, and does that leave, it looks like at least one more pad left there? Or a couple more pads there?
You know, I am not positive how many pads are left at the site, but we can give a follow-up on that.
I'm just curious. But no, I'm glad, I'm glad you're there, and I think it'll be good for, good for that area. So, thank you.
We'll just make sure the city manager follows up on that. Thank you very much. And Councilman Brandon said question. Any other? Yes, Councilman Pizzillo.
Katie? Excuse me. I appreciate the language that's in the staff report, because I remember last time I was up, I was always concerned about the use permit lining up with the actual site plan to make sure that what we were approving on the use permit was in compliance with the site plan. And I was pleased to see that language that kind of ties it to the site plan to the extent that with your stipulations and the language with a certain way, the drive-through and how the flow is going is got to be in compliance. The site plan's got to be in compliance in that. And I appreciate including that language within your staff report. So thank you.
Christopher, do you have an answer for the question that was presented?
Like five more plots there?
Yeah.
A little bit of a reflection. I don't know if you can tell if it's going to be or not. Yeah, it looks like five more, maybe.
This is the general location, if you will, for the Bahama Bucks. I believe that right there is the Federico's, and then I believe these are all vacant still.
Thank you.
All right, so it's, you can take that off your notes now. You don't have to. All right, did you have it? Vice Mayor, did you say something?
Thank you. Just welcome.
Okay, are we all set for voicemail? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Good job. All right, Katie, you're back up. This next item is a public hearing to consider rezoning from the agriculture zoning district to the final planned area development PAD. I'm opening the public hearing, and Katie's got the microphone.
Thank you. This is a request for rezone for a parcel from agricultural to commercial to allow the expansion of an APS facility. It's located on Cotton Lane in the Palm Valley 303 PAD. And you can see, this area here is where they're expanding, and that area is actually zoned correctly for a substation. The parcel where the substation is, is zoned agricultural, which is not the correct zoning, so we consider it legal non-conforming. And according to the zoning ordinance, if you alter a legal non-conforming site, you have to bring the site into conformance. And so they're zoning this parcel where it is existing, the correct zoning district, so that they can make improvements. The improvements are necessary to serve electricity to the site because development in the area, so it's very exciting. Properties within 500 feet were noticed. We have not received any objections or concern from anyone in the area, and nobody was in attendance to speak against the project at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the project.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, well, let's go, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read ordinance number 17-1371, by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 17-1371, conditionally rezoning approximately one acre from agricultural AG to final planned area development PAD, mending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stipp, and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. No discussion? All right, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, we're on to 7.4. That business is a public hearing to consider amendment to partial 12 of the Goodyear Plan Regional Center PAD. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Katie will take this again. Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. And if it please the council, the presentation is for both the PAD amendment and the preliminary plat.
Thank you for making that known.
This request is to amend the Goodyear Plan Regional Center PAD. This is parcel 12 of the PAD. It's located on Pebble Creek Parkway, just north of Virginia Avenue. It's currently designated as, it's currently designated as court homes by the PAD. The proposal is to build single-family lots, dwellings, on the parcel. The proposal includes 52 single-family lots on the 12 acres. It's actually lowering the density that was originally approved in the PAD development. And so, this would be the proposed zoning. The develop, the development would have primary access off of Pebble Creek Parkway, on the southern point here, and this would be a single primary access point. There is a secondary emergency access to the north. This was a challenging piece, a, and a, a variance to the engineering design standards were needed because of the driveway spacing, because of the APS site that was built. It became a challenging parcel, not just due to the shape, but also because of the existing driveways. The plan includes 3.8 acres of open space, which exceeds the open space requirements. There's also a trail under the APS facility, and so this parcel will connect to that trail. So, they'll have full access to that. And this is the provided development standards, which is typical for single-family development. And then, these are examples of the types of homes that will be proposed to be built on the site. The, a neighborhood meeting was held for the project. At the neighborhood meeting and the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were no objections noted by any of the members of the public. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item, and have recommended approval of both the PAD amendment and the preliminary plat. I do know the applicant is also available for questions and comments.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, Taylor Earl?
So, I'm here representing the applicant, so I'm happy to not present unless there's questions, I'm happy to proceed.
All right, we'll, we'll get this going and close the public hearing. The council, I'm sure, may have some questions to this, all right? All right, thank you very much. So, is there anybody in the audience who wanted to speak, besides applicant? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 17-1834, by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number 17-1834, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled "Goodyear Planned Regional Center Parcel 12 PAD Amendment", dated October 16, 2017.
Thank you. Could I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilman Hampton. All right, council, open for discussion. Let me start down this end, anybody down this end?
I, sure. I think it's a good product, I think it's a good spot to have that product.
Pulling that microphone.
I think it's good for the community, so thank you for the infill project here. It's a good, good spot there as well, and I like that the, like you took into account the single-story aspects on the sides, on the, facing the other neighborhoods. So, I think it's a good completion to that part of, part of Goodyear, so. And the products are good, too. I like the, the different elevations, so, I think it's a good, good for Goodyear, so thank you.
Councilman Loretano?
I, I also want to thank you for the infill, get that parcel, because that's a very odd-shaped parcel to fit anything in there, so I appreciate that. The houses, you know, the demonstrated on your presentation that you sent are very nice. What are just the sizes? What's the square footage? It's hard to tell. They look very nice, but just curious.
Mayor, members of council, for your record, Taylor Earl, Earl Curley-Lagard, address is 3101 North Central Avenue. So, the, the square footage has ranged from about 1547 to 2079, as of right now?
Okay, thank you very much, I just was curious.
Thank you. Councilman Stipp?
That would have been me.
That's questionable. I do allow you to speak, anyway.
Just on, no, I have, the map that I saw earlier today has the, most of these lots are 46 feet wide, is that correct?
That's correct, that's our, red is the minimum that we're proposing.
Okay.
46 by 110.
The, the only, the only concern, I mean, I love the idea that we're filling this in, and I was in support of the multifamily when it came forward, when the assisted living facility came in. The only, the only concern, which is not new, is we are going to force another traffic light on Pebble Creek Parkway, and has that been taken into consideration at this location?
Would somebody from staff address this?
Yeah, we're putting 55 homes in there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Stipp, and we are not forcing a traffic signal in this area. Again, with all our projects, we review a TIA, we look at the numbers, we look at the gaps along the existing roadway, and if there's sufficient gaps for those cars to turn into, no traffic signal is needed. Just to give a comparison, this has approximately 50 homes, and last week, or the week before, I presented to you on a necessary traffic signal on Camelback, where we have 400 to 500 homes. So, there is a significant difference, and we look at those trips.
The, and I guess the reason that I choose the force of a piece in there is, I, I spend a lot of time at the Groves, and I know how hard it is to get out of that facility, and this is the same shared driveway that we're going to call a street now, that people are going to access from. That if you live in that subdivision, it's going to be harder and harder to get out, and I'm afraid of the traffic accidents that are going to occur. And I don't know that, I don't know that, that this, I don't think we're going to hold anything up by not approving this, because all we're going to do is just make it worse. But, I guess I, I'm super sensitive to adding more and more traffic lights, and I guess I look in the future and just kind of ask that we look at these properties in their totality, and try to figure out ways to move the traffic, instead of waiting for the applicant to come with a really good product, and then us go, eh, I'm not really sure. But I don't have any objection to this particular project. I think the fill is, is important, it'll, it'll kind of complete that area, give more sense of, of community there, instead of a large open space. I just ask that we look at how we're moving those things through in the future, so, thanks.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Katie, can you put the drawing back up again, that you had of the, the map?
Yeah.
Right there, that's fine. Again, I, I like the fact that we're infilling, but here's my, here's my question with the emergency exit, or entrance. And part of it may be for fire, but that's going to be gated off unless there's emergency, which means if the fire truck is coming up that road, it's going to have to stop, I guess, unhook the gate, make a right-hand turn to get in, if they, if they're going to use that for an access, is that, is that an accurate description?
Let us have the police, uh, fire chief to address that.
We prefer to use the optocoms, so the gates that are controlled by our flashing lights to be able to open. But you are correct, and sometimes, in some scenarios, there are gates that are padlocked, and so we need to get out and use the key, so there is a delay there.
Is there a reason why you didn't put an access, access out of there, instead of temporary? Instead of having just one way in and one way out? I just, I'm just curious, because I've never been a big fan of only one way in and one way out of a, of a neighborhood.
Thank you, council member. It is not required to have more than one access out of a neighborhood. Again, all of this, the access points are based on the number of trips that are generated, and based on the number of trips that are anticipated, both in peak hours and throughout the day, an additional access point isn't necessary. However, from an emergency access point, once you exceed 30 dwelling units, you are required to have an emergency access, in the event the initial access is blocked.
So, is this access going to be gated, so that fire doesn't have to stop and move a chain to get in, or do we know that yet?
I am not aware of that, but we will certainly look into that and get back with you.
I, I just can't envision that truck being stopped there on, what is that, Pebble Creek Parkway, for somebody to get out, move the chain, so they can get in, if for some reason they have to access that from Pebble Creek Parkway. I would think that might be a safety issue, so anything that can relieve them having to actually stop, get out of the truck, move the gate, or move the chain to get in there, I, I think would, would be a good thing.
Understand.
One, one more question for Katie. Was it a couple council meetings ago, and I don't recall, that with the smaller lots, we came up with some type of criteria, in which with the smaller lots, they had to pick two from, from column one, one from column two, you know, yada yada. Does this apply, or does not apply, because it's a PAD?
Thank you, this does not apply, because it's a PAD, and the new zoning ordinance is not yet in effect. It takes 30 days.
Okay, so when the new zoning ordinance takes effect, if it was a zoning, then we would, that would deal with the STIPS, or whatever, the pick from one, this column, that column, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor?
Katie, on the map, and I noticed the homes were going to have two-story homes. Can you tell me where they're going to be placed, again? Do you know yet?
Well, thank you, I may not be fully understanding the question. There are restrictions, these homes along Pebble Creek Parkway, and these homes to the north that are across from Pebble Creek are restricted to one story.
That's all I needed to know. And, and then, the homes that are right against the Roosevelt Canal and the trail, are they going to have backyard fencing, so that there's no access to the canal, and to the trail?
I, I think I need the applicant's help on that one, I.
I'm just thinking of families that might be buying there, and we certainly don't want the children to fall in the canals.
So, as to, to the north or to the east, you're talking about the canal to the east? Okay, so to the north, the power line corridor, those will have normal block, block walls in the back, so there will be no individual access. The residents will have un-access point from the open space in the corner, but not off individual lot.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for filling in that eyesore.
Any other questions and comments? I just want to commend you for the, actually, the plan. That was a very difficult lot, in which to handle, whether it had been business at one time, they looked at it a long time ago, and our home development, I thought it was a really attractive look, and the way that you situated the homes, it's very pleasing. All right, council, let's go do a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, will the city clerk please read an ordinance, number 17-137, by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 17-1374, conditionally amending the zoning on a portion of parcel 12 of the Goodyear Planned Regional Center Planned Area Development, by changing the land use on approximately 12.2 acres from court home to single-family, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, a motion from Vice, from Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's go to 7.5 on business, to consider approving the preliminary plat for the Goodyear Plan Regional Center Parcel 12. Katie's back at the microphone.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to add, unless council has additional questions.
All right, great, thank you for saying, any, are there any speaker cards? Yes, Mayor, Taylor Earl. Okay. Just a moment, I've got to get my voice back here. Okay, the no speaker cards, would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Can I have a motion and a second, to approve the preliminary plat for the Goodyear Plan Regional Center, GPRC, parcel 12, subdividing 12.24 acres into 52 single-family lots and six tracts, approximately located north of the northeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia Avenue, within the Goodyear Plan Regional Center PAD, subject to stipulation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stipp, and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a comment, Katie, on that emergency, I would, I would really like the staff to follow up, to make sure there's a gate for that ex, entrance, instead of a chain of any kind, that somebody has to actually get out and move, so that when, if fire, if there is emergency, where they have to get in there, it's a matter of having that open, as opposed to stopping and getting out and moving that. Appreciate it. Not only that, from an aesthetics, because you're going to see it from Pebble Creek Parkway, I think we'd add to that as well, to have it set up as such, okay? Thank you.
And the city manager made record of that?
Mayor and, and Councilmember Pizzillo, I, it's just conferring with the attorney, I understand the interest to that, for it to actually be part of this, or to have to be a stipulation to that effect.
So, you have to move to have a?
So, do we put the stipulation on it?
Do I make a motion?
You'd make a motion to amend, to add a stipulation, to require that automatic gate.
Then I'll make a, a motion to make that an automatic gate, a stipulation.
Second.
Okay, so roll call vote, please. Councilmember Hampton?
Okay, yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. All right, thank you. So, where am I on this now?
Now, you're back to the main motion to approve the.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. I need to take a drink, please. Let's see, I think, who did this first, and then Trump just did it last week on the, on the television, so now, Mayor Lord.
Just remember, Mayor, it's on camera.
It's okay, I don't mind. All right, down at 7, see, I can talk better now. 7.6 on business, it's consider approving an agreement with, all right, we come pronounce this Wanrock? Rack?
Wanrack.
Wanrack, okay. For fiber optic license. Welcome, Alan Claypool, Chief Information Officer, is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This presentation is about a new license agreement for a company called Wanrack, to install fiber optics in our right-of-way and our PUE. You're going to hear later in the presentation that they're going to lease part of this fiber to the Aguafria School District. Fiber optic cable is the modern hipway of getting high data rates and high-speed connectivity between multiple buildings. This license agreement is for what we call pass-through communications, meaning there's no services provided. An example of that is the internet or file storage. They will be following the current processes that we have in place for dry utilities. We currently have two agreements, the first one is with Sprint, that is also pass-through communications, similar to what Wanrack is proposing, and IXC, which is interconnect between some buildings that are really close to each other. As I mentioned, they're leasing part of the fiber bundle to the Aguafria School District, and that's to hook up the various high schools and the district office. This is, they're using a federal grant called E-Rate to pay for the installation, typical network traffic, nothing special running across it. There are other fibers in the bundle, and Wanrack has the ability to lease or sell those to commercial companies. In the ordinance, we have the ability to receive fiber strands in lieu of the annual fee, and we are going to take advantage of that. fee, and we are going to take advantage of that. This shows a map of their proposed route. The green is within the Goodyear territory and the purple is outside. Our two fiber strands will cover the entire green area. Little bit about the provisions in the agreement. It's a five-year agreement with three renew options for five years each, and that's about twenty years total. Again, standard permit fees, and they will follow dry utilities, and we will receive those two fiber strands. What we'll use those for is our, as part of our current backbone, which is used for traffic signals as well as our network. This is a breakdown of that annual fee. It's eighty-nine cents per linear feet. There's approximately sixty-nine thousand one hundred and eleven linear feet in their proposal, which sets about sixty-one thousand annually. For a total lifespan of the entire twenty years, it's about one point two million. If we were to do that installation ourselves, it's almost one point four million. That concludes my presentation. We're requesting approval of the license with Wanrack, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards? No, Mayor. Would anybody like to speak? All right. Then can I have a motion and a second to approve a five-year license agreement between the city and Wanrack to install and operate and maintain a fiber optic communication system within the city? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilwoman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
I think this is a simple question, but if this, the system is expandable, is what I just heard, will installing this now limit anybody else from installing it elsewhere or parallel to or in the vicinity of later?
Mayor, council, it's a non-exclusive license, so no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Loretano?
And on kind of Councilmember Stip's question, so if another company wanted to hook in or would that be something that's possible to cover this other area, that those companies work with each other?
They can work with Wanrack and lease or buy the other fibers in the bundle, yes.
Okay, so if another company comes and wants to cover some of the area that's not covered, they could shoot off of their line?
Yes.
And cover more. I think it's a great idea. We need more high-tech, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions? So if there was a housing community and had an HOA and they decided they wanted to do that, is that a possibility?
They can contact Wanrack, and yes, certainly.
That might be a solution for some of those, and that's pretty close to that area. Okay, thank you. Oh, yes.
You might have already covered it, but what was the capacity? Like, or I guess how much can it cover?
I'm sorry.
What was the capacity or how much can it cover? So if you were to, could it be, can it feed a whole neighborhood? Can it feed, is scalable, so it can get? I'm just curious how much more it can do. That makes sense.
Certainly, in the mayor council, in the bundle, there's thirty-six fibers. We typically will use two or four, depending on the speed. The speeds that they'll be using for the school will be ten gig per second. That's pretty high.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We're at seven point seven on business to consider approving the Site Thirteen Reservoir Rehabilitation Project. And I have coming forward Tim Burkine, Senior Project Manager, and Barb Chappell, Utilities Operation Manager.
This project this evening is to rehabilitate and repair a one point five million gallon storage reservoir located in Estraya Mountain Ranch community. We have a map up. You can see this is the Site Thirteen location here. That storage is for the whole, the whole community in Estraya Mountain. Move that down a little. The reservoir was constructed in nineteen eighty-eight, and there's been no significant repairs done to the reservoir, so it's been deteriorating. We did a condition assessment back last fiscal year with Black and Beach was our consultant, and here's some photos of some of the condition of the inside. During that condition assessment, they determined that approximately fifteen percent of the floor would need to be completely replaced. As you can imagine, continued use of this reservoir without this rehabilitation will just continue that deterioration and risk the loss of water supplies. So we've got the funding this year, and I'm going to turn this over to Tim, and he's going to explain to you how we're going to deliver the project.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As part of this project, the rehabilitation, the entire interior will be sandblasted and recoded. The sandblasting, not just for the recoding, but it's also needed to help identify, you know, additional areas of corrosion. We can only tell so much from the evaluation. It's not to, you actually get down to the bare steel that you know, but we've anticipated that, so we've included the repairs that we know, and we've included contingency for those additional areas that we don't know, but we expect to find. The exterior itself is not going to be recoded, except for it will be spot-coated where we have repairs on the exterior to make. And it's critical that we do this work during the winter low-use periods. This will be a fast-track project, and all work will be completed by the end of March. The contractor is Felix Construction, using a job order contract, cooperative use job order contract with the City of Goodyear, and the major sub is Superior Tank Solutions, both of which are well-versed and specialists in this field. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Appreciate that. Are there any speaker cards? No, Mayor. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure of funds in the amount of six hundred and forty thousand for the Site Thirteen Reservoir Rehabilitation Project? Additionally, approve a budget transfer in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand from the water operating budget to the Site Thirteen Reservoir Rehabilitation Project WA one seven zero four in the capital improvement plan. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilwoman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Loretano?
I just have a question. You said it can do it during the low-use period. Will the residents notice any difference with either pressure or availability of water or anything along those lines, taste or anything?
Mayor, Councilmember Loretano, no. We've actually, during the condition assessment, took this tank out of service using a bypass system with no complaint to the residents, and it was out of service for several months last spring during that assessment.
So there's a secondary way that they're getting, the water's going right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question, Vice Mayor?
Do we have a plan where we're going to be watching to see if these repairs are enough, and we check it in five years or three years so that we don't all of a sudden have this huge expenditure?
So, yes, we're actually in the midst of a tank rehabilitation, rehabilitation program, and so we periodically, each year, have money funded to do repairs before the tanks get this bad.
Good, okay, thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo?
We did that last water study, just to bring us up to where we're supposed to be, not growth. There was several millions, I forget the number. Was this project that, which actually drove the rates, was this one of the projects in there? Or is this one of those unforeseen things that eventually we're going to have to cover in the next rate study?
No, this was one of the projects identified during the IWMP.
Was it? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Stip?
Kind of related to Councilmember Campbell's question. We have money set aside to do these repairs. Have we evaluated all of the tanks, though? I mean, thirty years is a long time, so, and I realize at points we've been playing catch-up and whatnots, but have we evaluated everything? I guess...
Yeah, so the purpose of the transfer for this particular tank was it's the worst condition, which is why it took two years to complete it through the assessment and then this work. So this one is the worst tank that we have.
But we've looked at all of them?
Yes.
And we, do we have a plan going forward?
We do. We actually rehabbed one last year, and then this year, this is going to be the one. So each year, until they've all been addressed, most of them are minor and recoding. This one is the only one with these major repairs.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Part of, yeah, hold on, before you, come on up, because I know you're going to be able to finish the rest of that. But I, I look at this like asset, the asset replacement or management program, which I think is awesome, and I'm trying to figure out is, have we reviewed this once already?
Why don't I turn that over to the city manager?
Yeah, before we, have we...
Mayor and Councilmember Stip, great points made by council. And just a little more background on this. This tank was the only reservoir that supplied water up in Estraya, so it was a Northern Solutions Agreement that we did with Newland Communities that actually built pipes that bypassed this tank, so it was only up until a couple of years ago that we could even get to a point where we could assess it, and then certainly get to the point now where we can go in and repair it. But this is an anomaly to have a tank that we could not even shut down during any period of time until we had that bypass done.
Yeah, that part makes a lot of sense, so, but have we seen the plan already? The plan going forward for these other tanks?
Mayor and council, what we do is we have a, you have not seen it.
Okay.
What we do is we have a schedule of all the tanks that we're going to do over the next several years. As our city manager mentioned, this, this particular tank, it was in our radar. We wanted to tackle it last year, but there was some work that was being done by the developer that needed to be completed before we could go in there. And this, as soon as they completed that work, we went ahead and scheduled the assessment, and now we're doing the actual repairs.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, any other, Councilmember Hampton?
Quick follow-up question. So I know the tank is like this, but do we have a plan, look at the piping after, after this tank? That takes it actually to the location? Do we actually borrow scope or check out the piping along the way for any degradation or...
Well, Councilmember Hampton, the piping within the site was evaluated by Black and Beach engineers at the time we did the site evaluation, so just short answer to your question is, other than piping directly affixed to the, to the reservoir, the rest of the piping on-site was fine. Now, beyond the site...
I'm just curious, the question is, it's so segregated here, I'm curious of the condition downstream of the piping, if there's any future leaks or anything like that? I don't know.
Mayor, council member, that's a great question. Actually, if you look at the pictures, the majority of the damage to the, to the reservoir is in areas where there is no water, is above the water level. Areas that are submerged typically will not have an issue, other than the floor, and in many cases, the rust that you see in reservoirs is actually being impacted from the bottom of the reservoir rather than from the top. So the challenge of looking at potable water systems is something that the industry is dealing with as far as how do we check, how do we assess the condition of our pipes? We are lucky in Goodyear because most of our pipes are under fifty years old, and so that's not an issue, that is, it's an emerging issue for us, but it hasn't been a priority at this point, so our distribution system is actually in really good condition. We're, our focus is actually on the wastewater system at this point.
Thank you. And then my follow-up question is, what, I don't know if I can ask this, what percentage of the money is the contingency? Or how many dollars is, how much is our contingency for this project, I guess? What I'm asking.
Approximately twenty-five percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Pizzillo?
Just to follow up with what Councilman Stip has asked, is the plan to replace or to rehab these units, is it complete? Is the plan complete? You had mentioned that you have a plan to replace the, all of these over a period of time. Is the plan complete right now?
Are you talking about the assessment?
On how you're going to go about rehabbing the rest of the units?
Yes, we have a schedule for how we will deliver the remainder of the rehab projects throughout the city.
Okay. If you have it, the only reason why I ask if it's complete, if maybe a yellow paper, whatever, just get a schedule of what those timelines are and what those particular projects are, please. That's all.
Any other? All right, we're going to vote on this. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now we'll go, I think you're staying up there for the next one. The business items, again, approving the expenditures of funds for Site Twelve Expansion Project. Tim and Barb are up, still up, so go ahead.
Okay, so as Mayor and council, as you all know, our water system is based solely on groundwater wells at this time, and during the IWMP, we identified some areas to improve some redundancy and increase the reliability of our system by adding some new wells. What we brought to you this evening is a combination where we have, to deliver the project, we've combined some projects. So there were two wells, two wells identified to expand our Site Twelve, and I, on this map here, you can see there's the first well here, another well down here and where a future El Cidro subdivision is going to be located. That's the parcels you see here. And then the Site Twelve is this area up here. The project also, one of the other projects in the IWMP was to increase storage in this planning area. We were able to obtain property from the developer to expand that Site Twelve that would accommodate a future storage tank. So what we're bringing to you this evening is two new wells, transmission lines to the site, and expansion of the site with storage, treatment, and boosting capacity to increase the redundancy and reliability of our water system.
All right, Tim.
Mayor, council, to merge several projects into one and to deliver this project in a seamless integration of all the elements, we are using the design-build method. The city issued a request for qualifications for design-build firms. We went through an extensive qualifications-based selection. Hunter Contracting was the top-ranked firm that selected as the most qualified team. I want to mention that the Hunter team includes NCS engineers as the principal engineering firm. They'll be responsible for all engineering and design aspects, and they're also very familiar with the City of Goodyear infrastructure. The team also includes Waitec Engineering Corporation. They specialize in membrane technologies, and the team also includes Clear Creek Associates, and they specialize in geologic and hydrologic investigations as well as well design. This first phase, the IMS before you tonight, is for the design phase of the design-build project. The design phase, as I mentioned, includes design and engineering of all the aspects, but it also includes drilling of the two new wells, the well twenty-four to the north and the well twenty-five to the south. The reason for this is we need to drill the wells, get a sampling, get information of the depth, the water quality, a lot of the other hydrogeologic information that will then be used in designing the treatment, the pumping, and the storage. The construction phase will be delivered using guaranteed maximum price package, also called a GMP. When the, when the design, engineering, and pricing for all of the construction has been completed, we will be coming back to you again in May for award of the GMP contract. So I just, just want to make sure that it's understood that there's, this is a multi-phase, a multi-year project. The water mains are shown here, actually, that's the next item after this, that's being constructed separately. It's not part of this design package. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I think we're satisfied here, so are there any speaker cards? No, Mayor. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure of funds in the amount of three million, excuse me, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight and nineteen cents for the Site Twelve improvements and increased capacity project? Additionally, approve nine million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred budget transfer to combine six separate Site Twelve-related project budgets in the water bond and North Central Water Impact Fee. project budgets in the Water Bond and North Central Water Impact Fees Funds into a single project to be named Site 12 Improvements and Increased Capacity. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. All right, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. You're still on board here for the next one. By the way, before we get to the next one, that was a great presentation. It was, you answered all the questions and the visuals were good. So I really appreciate that because this can be very complicated and very expensive, as we all know. So the next item is to consider approving the LC drill raw water mains project. So you're on.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening again. This project, the raw water pipelines, will carry water from those two new wells, wells 24 and 25, as shown in the exhibit, convey those, the water supplies to the Site 12 for the centralized treatment and storage to boost into the distribution system. As Tim explained, we're doing this under a separate project in coordination with the developer that's on the site. So CVL has already performed the design of those lines and we're here this evening requesting approval. I'll let Tim explain how we procured this. Okay, thank you.
The contractor we've procured is Eagan Gardner. They're also very familiar with the area. We're using the cooperative use job order contract with the City of Peoria again. The reason that we're doing this now is, I'm sure council is aware, is there is a development happening out there and we need to get this pipeline in the ground before they pave over it. That's pretty much it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate that. That's an important phrase you just said. Okay, can I have a motion a second to approve the expenditures of the funds in the amount of $639,395.40 for the construction of the LC drill 12-inch raw water mains project in accordance with the job order contracting proposal and approved plans? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All right, I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, the second from Councilman Stipp. Open for questions, yes. Councilman Hampton?
Quick question. When is this development scheduled to be coming? I might have missed the final plats and everything earlier on.
Councilman Hampton, I'm aware that the developer, or I'm sorry, the contractor for our developer is currently-
There we have Christian behind you. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you. The zoning entitlements for the project are done and we're going through subdivision process.
Still needs to be submitted.
Subdivision?
Just slow it down.
The zoning entitlements are complete and we're going through the zone, excuse me, the subdivision process, preliminary final plat construction plan process currently.
Okay, so it hasn't, okay.
So give them an estimation about when this starts.
So we actually met with them today and they told us to hurry up and get out there because they want their grading permit. So you'll be, as soon as we get in and out, they'll be grading the property.
We like that spirit.
Thank you.
That's exactly, I think we're all smiling on that one. So are we ready to vote? All right, let's see, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. 7.10 on the business item is to consider accepting easement and map dedications in connection with the sale of the city property to AL Arizona. Linda Beals, real estate coordinator, will be presenting. Linda?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to be going over very quickly. I promise that actually my presentation won't take nearly as long as it would take to read the two council actions. I'm actually going to go over two of them together, 176170 and 176213, because they are both related to the property that the city is selling at the corner of Cotton and Indian School, the property formerly the Duncan Farm site. Both of these, both of these council actions are related to the council action that was taken or was brought before you back in June for 171813, which was the purchase agreements with Aldi, AI, and the Sunbelt RPPV6 properties. And as part of those transactions, we need to move forward with the infrastructure for both Indian School Road and Cotton Lane. The two council actions we're bringing to you tonight, 176170, is the, is six dedications from three different property owners. These are the private property owners adjacent to portions of Indian School and Cotton Lane. They include two of Sunbelt's entities and Epcor, who owns the tiny little piece right here that's white on the map. So with those, we'll be looking at accepting the map of dedications for the roadways for Indian School and a map of dedication for Cotton Lane, PUEs associated with those roads, as well as a temporary drainage easement. When we move on to 176213, that property is the property owned by this, this one, this council action relates to the property owned by the city. In that case, you see an awful lot of resolutions. And the reason being that the city cannot actually dedicate property they own to themselves. So what we do in those cases is we actually complete a resolution that says we're declaring a public utility easement here. We're declaring a roadway here. So that's what you have with regard to the various resolutions. We have the public utility easements along the Indian School and Cotton, two resolutions for temporary drainage easements, one associated with the portion of the property to be sold to the Sunbelt entity, and one that's also, then one that's also for the lot that's going to be sold to Aldi. And then we also have the map of dedication for Indian School and Cotton. Last but not least, we have a minor land division. Normally, those are not brought to the council, but in this case, because we're seeking to have authority, which is required by our purchase agreement in advance for Aldi, in advance of the sale transaction, we are bringing it to you as part of this package. So what I wanted to let you also know tonight is that we are on track for closing in mid-December. So things have moved forward very, very quickly. As you might recall, we had property that needed, we had buildings and stuff that needed to be torn down on the site. It's been a very, we've been very, very busy as staff. It's taken a lot of partnership between departments as well as private entities, active development services, planning staff, engineering, CIP, plan review, city clerk, finance, our legal services staff, Sunbelt, Aldi. Without all of them, I mean, just to get here to this point tonight, it's taken a humongous effort on the staff. And they've all came forth and just done everything they needed and as quickly as possible to get us to where we hope we should without any problem be able to close in mid-December. So that's the end of my transaction.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, I need a motion and a second to approve and accept the dedication of the public utility access easement from the RPPV6 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, attached as Exhibit 1. Two, approve and accept the map of dedication of the West Indian School Road, Parcel 2, from RPPV6 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, attached as Exhibit 2, subject to stipulations. Three, approve and accept the map of dedication of the West Indian School Parcel 1, from Epcor Water, Arizona, Inc., attached as Exhibit 3, subject to stipulations. Four, approve and accept the dedication of the public utility and access easement from RPPV5 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, attached as Exhibit 4. Approve and accept the dedication of the temporary drainage easement from RPPV5 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, attached as Exhibit 5. Six, approve and accept the map of dedication of the North Cotton Lane from RPPV5 LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, attached as Exhibit 6, subject to stipulations. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
We just want to make sure I understand this correctly in English. All of this legal maneuvering has to be done in order to put the drainage, the road in, and for the project to be closed at the end of December.
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Yeah, it's an awful lot of paper to get to that point, but yes.
So an executive summary, I just summarized it, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, thank you for all the coordination and all the work you guys did as staff and work with all the stakeholders to make this happen. So this is definitely something good for our community and help out the businesses in that area, too. Thank you.
All right, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. So we're at 7.11. Now, this is the item to business to consider adopting the resolutions, number 17-1839, resolution number 17-1840, and resolution number 17-1841, and resolution number 17-1842, and resolution 17-1843. And I think you've presented, so do you need to present more on this?
No, no ma'am.
Okay, I didn't think so. So are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? So it's your turn now. Would the city clerk please read resolution number 17-1839, 171840, 17-1841, 17-1842, and 17-1843 by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number 17-1839, declaring public utility easements, providing direction regarding the recordation of the resolution and providing for an effective date. Adopt resolution number 17-1840, declaring temporary drainage easements on property that is to be conveyed to AI Arizona DC LLC, providing direction regarding the recordation of the resolution and providing for an effective date. Adopt resolution number 17-1841, authorizing establishment of public streets by approving map of declaration, providing direction regarding recordation of map of declaration and providing for an effective date. Adopt resolution number 17-1842, approving a minor land division, splitting certain owned city property into two lots, providing direction regarding the finalization and recordation of the minor land division and providing for an effective date. Adopt resolution number 17-1843, declaring a temporary drainage easement on property that is to be conveyed to RPPV6 LLC, providing direction regarding the recordation of the resolution and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Great job. All right, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Stipp and a second from Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. All right, then we're going to vote on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Excuse me, mayor. Mayor, it has to be a roll call.
Oh, roll it. Well, let's just reverse that one. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Great, all right, thank you. So councils, now information items. Does council have any comments, accommodation reports, current events, where you've been? Who would like to talk? I know the vice mayor, you've been somewhere.
I have been somewhere. I just wanted to report very quickly. I attended the National League of Cities, City Summit in Charlotte, South Carolina.
North Carolina.
I mean, North Carolina. I don't even know where I went. Sorry. North Carolina, that's right, I'm sorry. And it was a very interesting conference. I was a presenter at two of the events, but I learned, every time I go, I learn something new and exciting and different. And I've got folks looking into some projects that hopefully I can report back, that they'll be able to help us do more. We had a little, over 4,000 people present. They were from almost all over the United States. And I spoke at a member luncheon and we were recruiting new members and we recruited 27 new cities to join. So it was really interesting and I appreciate the opportunity to go. And the next big meeting will be in March in Washington DC when we will storm the hill for fairness market, for the municipal bond issue and the tax reform issue. And then next October, I'm sorry, November, it'll be in Los Angeles.
I think I like that. Add just hit a storm?
Yeah, we're going to storm the hill.
Okay.
So thank you.
All right. Yes, any of us, yes, Councilman Lortano?
I'll save my other part for-
Yeah, okay.
I attended the New Life Luncheon. The young lady hosting our tables was an eighth grader and I was very impressed. It's her third year. Hilary Gringold of hosting a table, to have an eighth grader interested in that issue and how important it is. So it was a lovely event.
She did a nice job, too, didn't she? Any others? Nobody has anything? I'm just looking over my schedule to see. No others? Just a second, let me look here, because I know I've been to some other things. I think the probably one, the most important one was a conversation with Senator McCain on the, on Rio Salada Project. And so we had the Indian Tribes and other mayors together on this discussion. And it sounds to me like we've got a buy-in from the communities to start this. It'll be a very visionary project. It's got a lot of steps to go through, but it's very encouraging, so. All right, I'm going to turn that over to the city manager.
Do we do nine yet?
What?
Do we do our items for future?
Yeah, okay, we'll do that first, okay? So I was going to give the city council, why don't we do the manager as it goes? All right, city manager, your report first and your follow-up.
Yes, mayor, members of the council, I did have one follow-up item, and that is report to council on the status of our plans and timelines for water reservoir, tank rehabilitations, evaluation, et cetera. So we'll be getting that to council. And then just a couple of announcements. One is, is our offices will be closed, of course, on Thanksgiving Day and the day after. Just for the public that may be listening, there will be no trash recycling or bulk refuse service on the holiday, but services will resume the day after Thanksgiving. So on a modified schedule, where collection shifts are one day later than usual. Emergency fire and police will still be servicing as normal, and then we reopen City Hall on Monday. And then on Coffee with a Cop, I know that that was attended by some, and if you want to talk about it, I don't want to steal your thunder, but we did have about 30 community members that did attend that. It was up in Estrella at Oasis Bagels, and just a good turnout from the public.
Thank you. Have you got one more? I'm sorry.
Just one more, mayor. And that's Goodyear Ballpark. We have the Christmas in Color, so it's 1.5 million holiday lights. And the reason I'm talking about it now, that actually starts Friday, November 24th, and goes through the end of the calendar year. And so that's 1.5 million LED lights that are synchronized to your favorite holiday music. And I do have a kind of an interesting fact, if they strung all the lights together, it'd be 100-plus miles of lights.
My goodness.
So you actually get to drive through these tunnels, there's leaping arches, giant snowflakes, 35-foot tall trees, and lights are animated to the rhythm, and I guess it's seven plus of your favorite holiday songs. But you actually stay in your vehicle, turn on the radio, and you'll listen to it through your vehicle's radio system. It takes about 30 minutes to go through this, so we will not be having it as an obstacle course to try and get through it quickly, but very excited about this. We're promoting it on social media and getting quite a bit of interest in it. Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Well, council, have any inquiries? Mayor Lortan, I mean, Councilman Lortano, just-
Okay, so this is my little ask for my friends on the council, okay? I told you I went to the New Life Luncheon, and I used to be really involved with domestic violence. And so I was putting my stuff for taxes away, and I found, that's why you all have these little cards on your thing, these little baseball cards. They're about 13 years old. And on the back of them in English and Spanish are like crisis lines, information that you can use. When I was the chair of the Phoenix Domestic Violence Task Force, we got these printed with the Arizona Diamondbacks and gave them out, and why they were so good and worked- And why they were so good and worked so good is unlike the mag cards that you give out, they're non-threatening. A victim of domestic bonds, if you have those around with your children, it's a baseball card. They're non-threatening and it's got the information on the back. So my ask, and it didn't cost us, when we did it, anything to print because so many businesses from the community stepped up. So my ask is if we could put this on agenda, look into it with our teams, I don't know, maybe other Cactus League teams too, because I thought it was really kind of sad that 20 years later, when I used to do this, we're talking about the same issues over and over again. And it's kind of depressing because you're not seeing it make any difference. So if we can find a way to not cost the city any money, maybe reach out to our teams and since Nathan's Mr. Spring Training, maybe that's something, you know, if the council's into that, that we could do and see if we could get these out in spring training, something along the lines, because kids love them, take them home. The abuser or the abusive boyfriend or husband doesn't find it threatening and it can also fit like a shoe card in your shoe if you need to, so.
She came to me on this and I said I thought it was a great idea, since we have two teams here, so if we can somehow introduce that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're in? Yeah, we're all in. So it's kind of one of those projects that, yeah, so, okay?
Yes, Mayor and council, we can bring that back to council as far as the details behind that.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Councilman Stip?
While we're on the note of good ideas, I was at the ICMA conference about a month or so ago in San Antonio and they were getting ready to do a shred-a-thon in, in San Antonio. It got me to think about what services are available locally. Had a brief conversation with Jessica about the viability and the ability to do that. Prelimarily, it looks like it's a program that might be less than $1,000 and some whatnot. So I'm asking for, that we provide direction to have the staff finish the investigation, find out what it was going, what it would cost us and then to tie that to tax season for identity theft prevention.
All right, I think we got four? Did you understand the request?
Yes, and we'll put that as a future agenda item for council's consideration.
Okay.
Just, just clarification, make sure I understand shred-a-thon, get everybody together, they shred all their personal?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, free shredding. There's a certain limit to the number of boxes and stuff, kind of like we do household ashes and waste, but we do it with shredding, they bring it. You partner with a shredding company, they go through and do whatever they're going to do. I know that the county attorney's office does one and they partner with cities, they do them a few times a year. And there's several other valley communities that do it and I thought we ought to maybe stand up.
There's quite a few of the businesses that do it too.
Yeah, we do it in Pebble Creek. We have it in Pebble Creek.
Speak in there if you want, what?
We have, we have had the shredding truck come to Pebble Creek that a, a local realtor has sponsored.
Now, the lawyers doing some because I think we're talking about some that we can't talk about, so.
Okay, so.
We're going to stop the conversation and you got, okay.
Perfect, so can I ask my questions now?
I want you to know you're on top of it tonight and I really appreciate that, okay?
I don't have an idea, I just have an inquiry, please, to the city manager. I'm sure council would like to have an update on the RFP process for the excess city buildings. And also I'd like to request that a council retreat date be established to be held sometime within the next four months.
Mayor and, and vice mayor, so specific to your first item, that is scheduled for December. I believe it's December 18th that we'll be in, with council in work session as far as the findings. And then regarding the other item, that will really be up to council to determine if you, if and when you want to have the next retreat. We will be having a budget retreat earlier in the calendar year and that's specific to items that would be discussing appropriations for items that you may want to include in the budget, but regular council retreats not on, on your calendars at this time.
Yeah, because we, the, you know, if I may speak on the, the budget, we decided that that was really important to get all those items discussed before we start a budget. So there is only so much time for each of these things and remember, we also are in the process, process of bringing a new city manager. So we're balancing dates like crazy and so I can, I, you know, we have to think of the, the top list of the things we've got to do right away. Councilman Stip?
Mayor, I think that because getting everything coordinated with our schedules is such a challenge, that if we start to look at potential dates now, it might be helpful even if we just get it blocked on our respect.
Potential is a little different than saying definitely.
Well, yeah, I think we have to have a, you know, a calendar hold put for something. And then when the new city manager shows up, he or she says, oh no, we don't need to do that, or hey, I need three of them. But whatever the situation is, if we don't have any dates, I know how hard it's been for us to get, to get the two half-days for the, for the strategic planning thing. So I would support the idea of let's get some time blocked out and then...
And then be ready, accept change if change happens.
It's easier to cancel than it is to try to put in.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, for both the budget and the retreat.
Yeah, if you want to...
Two separate retreats or together.
Or if you want to roll them together, I mean, whatever, but let's get some dates planned and blocked.
I'll go along with you as long as I'm assured that you're talking flexibility and that we're not going to tie this person up, the new, okay?
All right.
All right. You got that, you got that direction?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, are we all done here? So the next special, will be a special meeting on December 4th at 5:00 PM. Before we go, a couple things. I want to make sure that people know that Coffee with a Cop was so, I know you said, city manager, but I was there. And let me tell you, it was such a good feeling because that particular shop showed some displeasure when we brought up the other restaurants, you know, when McDonald's came in and Taco Bell came in. And so I went up there specifically so I could get the lay of the land, find out how everybody felt. It was new ownership, they were very excited, the place was packed. I sat down with a couple who don't even live there. They drive up there once or twice a week to get a, to get a, what do they, I don't eat these, with a bagel, thank you. I'm a donut person, but, you have donuts too. But these people came up for the bagels and I thought that was, that was very important. And coffee. And people were asking questions and they just loved the fact that the chief is there and the other, these officers are there and they talk so freely. And then three firemen walked in because they like bagels and coffee. And so then they kind of got wrapped up into it. So it was, I have to tell you, it was, you know, you go so many times when the neighborhood comes together and you're not sure, you're not sure if you're going to be in the corner with a lot of questions and, you know, fingers and it wasn't. It was absolutely a pleasant, pleasant time. So it's a good, it's a good, it's a good deal to have these because people really come in smiling when they see you and that's, that's good for all of us. Next, have a happy Thanksgiving. Take your minds off this council and all our demands and all the things we do, just go have fun. Don't eat too much and we'll look forward to seeing everybody afterwards. So is everybody ready to, is this a good time? This meeting is adjourned.